Item four twenty, this one's probably hopefully gonna be the easier one. I have fifty-eight hundred training. We spent last year four fifty. I'll do this to just make it easier, I think. We spent four fifty last year, I'm recommending a thousand. In fifty-eight-ten, in training reimbursement, we spent a hundred and five dollars, I'm recommending five hundred. In fifty-eight-twenty, training material, we spent sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, I'm recommending two fifty. In sixty-fifteen, on office supplies, we spent four fifty-nine, I'm recommending five hundred. In sixty-twenty, postage and shipping, four hundred and two dollars we spent. People in line, four hundred dollars. Sixty-twenty-five, we spent eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, put a thousand. Sixty-thirty, maintenance supplies, we spent twenty-seven thirty-six, twenty-three thousand. Sixty-forty, operating supplies, we spent twenty-three ninety-seven, putting in twenty-five hundred. Skipping down to sixty-one oh three, we spent six, in service contracts, we spent six hundred and thirty dollars, we spent seven, I'm recommending seven fifty. Sixty-one oh five, building, maintenance and repair, we spent two thousand forty-nine, I'm recommending five thousand. Skipping down to sixty-one eleven, vehicle truck parts, we spent eleven ninety-two, recommending three thousand. Sixty-one eighteen, radios and radio equipment.
Three thousand?
Three thousand. In sixty-one eighteen, radios and radio equipment, we spent a hundred and sixty-six dollars, recommending two fifty. And sixty-one twenty, gas and oil, we spent twenty-eight hundred, recommending twenty-nine hundred. And sixty-one thirty, small equipment, we spent eighty-seven hundred, I'm recommending fifteen thousand. Sixty-one sixty, alright, change sixty-one sixty, skipping down to sixty-six sixty. Computer hardware, three thousand dollars, recommending thirty-five hundred. Sixty-six eighty-six, ambulance billing services, we spent thirty-nine thousand three hundred, recommending forty thousand.
Sixty-six eighty-five.
Sixty-six eighty-five, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Forty thousand. Travel and transportation, seventy-ten.
I'm sorry, sixty-six eighty-five is what?
Forty-four, forty thousand. I'm zeroing out travel and transportation. Seventy-thirty, we spent two hundred and four dollars, make that two hundred and fifty. Seventy-forty, dues and membership, we spent forty-four fifty, recommending forty-five hundred. Seventy-seventy, license and fees, we spent two hundred and forty-five, recommending two fifty. And seventy-eighty-one, community promotions, we spent seven seven seven, recommending seven fifty, just to round it. So, it's actually increasing all of them, just rounding them off a little bit, from what we spent last year. And I'm, to suggestions, but I think this is an easy one.
There's a, go ahead.
Just a few questions, again, probably stay up. Sixty-twenty-five, training and copy, I'm just noting, fairly large increase from what we spent, is there a reason?
It's, it's how we divide up the copiers for each department, and I believe the police, or the fire department has one, two copiers, okay. So, that, that comes down to accounting.
Okay, so, I mean, just why was it so much less last year, now it's gonna be higher?
I would wanna look at how we allocated those.
So, maybe different allocation.
We only allocated one copier there when there's actually two.
Can we give them a little more room?
That's fine, we can make that two thousand, it's probably an agreement.
Alright.
I signed a few of those this year, so.
Operating, sixty-fourty, operating supplies, big increase, I guess, again, question wise.
Yes, for that one, that was the hoses, we currently only have, oh no, that's not, okay, what was the operating supplies? Remember, at length, you discussed about those.
You're asking for eight thousand, chief, and we spent twenty-three ninety-seven, so I recommended twenty-five hundred unless there's a good reason.
Sixty-fourty, you put in the notes. I don't have the notes here, I'm sorry.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was for the, that's right, that was the VLS equipment for, or the, operate the engine and trucks, the VLS. That was forty-six hundred dollars.
Alright, can we make it five thousand? Or even six, I think six I'd be comfortable with, that gives a very hundred dollar cushion.
Well, it's forty-six in addition to.
It is, what, they're four hundred.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, eight thousand does seem like a good reason.
I forgot about what we spent last year, so I agree, eight thousand's fine.
Sixty-one oh three, service contracts, again, we've got a pretty good size increase there.
Yeah.
Why?
Sixty, what, what's my, sorry.
Sixty-one oh three, service contracts, it's twenty, it's allocated twenty-two hundred, and we spent sixty-one point sixty-two.
I think that was also, if we were to change our building software, and how we went about doing it, there's different obviously contracts for the buildings, that would include also for firehouse, software that we do track our ones and everything else, so that was anticipation for if we were to change that.
Is that a definite plan, or are you still thinking about it?
The billing, at the, at least for the EMS, I would like to do that, because that's gonna give us some savings, and what we pay out at the start of the percentage on a monthly basis.
So, by spending money.
So, that's where the ambulance, that's where the ambulance go?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alden.
Alderman, Fairwood, are you on finance?
Yes, I am.
Didn't you guys discuss this in your committee?
We did discuss it with my neighbor.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'll encourage.
Number eighty-fourty.
I'm not done, but there's something, I wanna just.
Was it any equipment, I understand that that was through the boat lift?
Yes.
How have we been getting our boat in and out of the water?
It stays at public works, and when we need it, we have to open up public works, grab the boat, hitch it up to back of a truck, take it down to Cal. Cal.
It sits down there for summer.
For March through November, it sits there.
Okay, so, we would be buying a boat lift just for putting it in once and taking it out once?
No, it would stay in the water.
Well, I know, but we're getting it in the water now.
It would stay there throughout the, from, from that November to March, it would stay there on the lift, instead of going to public works.
And why is there a problem with leaving it at public works?
Public works is an unsecure area, we currently have issues with people commencing through our trucks and vehicles at night.
Somebody's gonna steal our boat?
We've had load statement for my vehicles, we have.
Which one?
I, I, to stop with line, I'm, I would imagine that they would like to do this to enhance the service in case of event that something happens down there and you need to get that boat in there ASAP.
But, it's already, right? I mean, we put the, we put the boat in the water in the spring.
Correct.
Let's say in Maine, and it stays in the water.
Correct.
It's, it's not like if we get a call and we have to run, you get, you know, put the boat in the water, it's already there.
We can take the boat.
But, isn't this a boat lift?
So, this will stay there permanently?
I understand, but is it a lift to keep it out of the water to help preserve the boat?
Yes.
But, but you wouldn't put it up on a lift when it wasn't used, except for the winter?
Yeah, for the winter, it would be on the lift, of course.
Okay, but throughout the summer, it would still be in the water?
Yeah.
Okay, and. I'm, I'm just thinking, why is a boat lift more secure than the public works here? Couldn't somebody steal it off the lift? It's just, it just seems like spending seventy-five hundred dollars for points of your convenience.
Chief said he's okay with throwing it together, he's okay with it then.
Alright, going back to cleanup, I'm sorry, the cleanup, the last one, we, we never agreed to a dollar amount, was that the certain sixty-one oh three?
Right.
What was the, what was the sixty-one oh three? Twenty-two hundred, I'm fine, twenty-two hundred.
Alright, thank you.
Alderman, fairway, you still wanted to continue, I think?
Yes, thanks.
What was, what was sixty-one oh three, I'm sorry?
Uh, we're leaving at twenty-two hundred.
Is that correct?
Going back to twenty-two hundred?
Correct, staying. Okay, sixty-one-ten, maintenance repair, again, big, big increase, why?
Uh, that's, well, part of it's the front door, and station one is a bigger door, and I have to offer thirty-five hundred to replace that bottom corner panel. Upgrades to some of the, to both stations, I'd like to do the, the office at station two is in, disrepair right now, I'd like to basically get that fixed and, and up to date for them out there, and then general cosmetics throughout the station, and whatever comes in. Old buildings are fairly old, so.
Well, can we build at least a ten? Which one are you on, all types, and sixty-one oh five? Sixty-one oh five, sorry, building maintenance repairs for fifteen thousand dollars, number sixty-one oh five.
So, I, okay, five to ten?
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, vehicle truck parts. It's kinda a big, big increase from eleven hundred dollars to four thousand, maybe three thousand, I was curious, if there's some pressing need for four thousand for sixty-one-eleven vehicle trucks, parts for four thousand dollars.
We spent, chief, we spent twelve hundred, I'd like to.
That's, yeah, that, and again, this is for, the fleet is getting older, so batteries, we did invest quite a bit in batteries. Again, it, you can't protect that, we'll obviously the budget on, uh, vehicle truck parts themselves, or I'm sorry, the, the one above that, sixty-one-ten, and again, it's a, so, I, you know, again, it's, it's up to the council as to what they wanna do, but that was figuring that the agent placed general maintenance on them throughout the course of the year, potentially that's where we're gonna be at.
Three thousand, four thousand, or twenty?
I think if this one's, we can leave at three, because we are raising already almost a thousand dollars, and again, it's something that really broke, like last time the fire truck went down, we all are aware of what's going on.
Alright. Line sixty-one sixty, SCBA compressor, again, we've got a big increase to twenty-three thousand dollars this year.
This one was a change.
We didn't change it.
Oh, we didn't, that's sorry, what?
At the, at the fifteen thousand. The one above that, sixty-one thirty?
Yes, that's pretty small, sixty-one thirty, that's.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sixty-one thirty, sorry.
We currently only have one set of hoses, we don't have anything in backup, and I would like to get our trucks to, if all this goes down, I wanna have a backup.
I think we should keep it then.
Alright, thank you, Alderman, Rita. I just would like to point out that there was plenty of ample time to do this, months ago, weeks ago. I'm frankly not inclined to wanna change any of this now, but I'm compromising, and that is why we're doing this. Sixty-six eighty-five, ambulance billing services, I, it's, I don't know, forty-two thousand dollars is appropriated, we spent thirty-nine thousand, that'd be, I guess, thirty minus forty thousand.
That's not a big change.
Seventy-thirty, rentals and leasing fees for a thousand dollars, we only spent two hundred and four, is there something anticipated that we really need to have a thousand dollars?
No, we could probably, it's pretty expensive.
Alright, we'll go with it.
Alright.
Yeah, and again, a lot of these small line items, we can add them at an amount that we can spend up to, we're not high as. Yes, you're preaching to the choir. Okay.
Alright. Alderman, how are you?
On the vehicle truck maintenance and repair, you, the, you had an engine being replaced, correct, in one of the engines, or?
No, we had, we had both, we had all three rigs broken down, since I started.
All three what?
Rigs.
Okay.
Both engines have broke down, the reserve engine that had not been run for four years actually went out to Rome, and I told them as funds become available to look at it, and then we went to the, to the grandparents coming up to replace that one. So, we had minor, well, I should say minor, we had some front end issues on both engines, and we had hydraulic issues on the truck, and those have sent all the repairs there.
And that's all in this year, correct?
Uh, a lot of it is.
So, where are we at this year so far on this, on these repairs?
We haven't gotten in all the invoices yet.
Where do you think we are?
Probably over twenty right now.
And it's not one I changed.
I know, I'm worried that it's like, we spent seventy thousand last year, and we appropriated forty last year, we're only appropriated forty this year.
Appropriated.
And I just knew that we had some major repairs this year, so I'm more concerned that it's, I don't know.
But, again, we're only halfway through, and we're gonna be in, they need some breaks now.
Yeah, well, we're not, yeah.
Maybe one that makes it.
Yeah, which line of?
Sixty, sixty-sixty, that goes hand in hand with the other licenses that we change over, and have to convert our software for the engines or the fire equipment, I mean, we don't necessarily have that, that nine, but somewhere in the middle of it, in case we do switch and have to.
Do five, uh, let's see here, what was the amount last year?
Ten-nine-fifty, we spent three thousand.
To six?
Uh, sixty-six sixty. Six thousand and a half.
Alright, ready to repeat this? Alright, fifty-eight hundred, training a thousand, fifty-eight-ten, I mean, it's not something, that's what I said the first time, but fifty-eight hundred, thousand, fifty-eight-ten, five hundred, fifty-eight-twenty, two fifty, sixty-fifteen, five hundred, sixty-twenty, four hundred, sixty-twenty-five, one thou, oh, two thousand, two thousand, sixty-thirty, three thousand, sixty-fourty, eight thousand, sixty-one oh three, twenty-two hundred, sixty-one oh five, ten thousand, sixty-one eleven, three thousand, sixty-one eighteen, two fifty, sixty-one twenty, twenty-nine hundred, sixty-one thirty, twenty-three thousand, sixty-six sixty, six thousand, sixty-six eighty-five, forty thousand, seventy-ten, zero, seventy-thirty, two fifty, seventy-forty, forty-five hundred, seventy-seventy-five, two fifty, seventy-eighty-one, seven fifty, and eighty-fourty, zero. And then I got the contingency in the back, with the fire trucks are removed, because if they need the fire trucks, they gotta go by demolition, that should definitely go through council and committee and everything.
Oh, good.
You got one other?
No, I, I, I missed one other thing, I'm sorry, and I gave back, the two training ones, and again, I came in obviously late years, you all know, there has not, and that, there hasn't been any training with the outside classes or stuff, obviously there is a cost that goes with the outside classes, which are, I won't say very costly, but that they're gonna be more, if we send one person for a set of classes, it's well over a thousand dollars.
So, it's training and training reimbursement, which one are you addressing?
Uh, both, if, if I could.
So, we spent four fifty in one oh five, and there's a thousand five hundred, that's, that's more than doubled from last year, you think any more than that?
What, what I, what I was actually conservative.
Alright, we go on, chief. I always have sympathy for the fire department, not so much the police.
Wow.
Who doesn't like a firearm? No. What was that, now we just amend what I just said, was it two thousand?
He's sitting there, take this?
Yeah, he knows I love him. Fifty-eight-ten, what was that, we made that a thousand again? Okay, alright.
I may go to change, okay, are we okay? I'd like to make that motion.
Motion, another second, would you have any questions?
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwood.
Hi.
Fairwood, hi, Osling.
No.
Osling, no, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, Pulos.
Hi.
Pulos, hi, Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Viera.
No.
Viera, no, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, eleven eyes and two no's.
I don't blame anybody who was on the ask committee for voting no on every single one incident. I said, I don't blame anyone who was on the ask committee for voting no on any of these. Call number four twenty-three?
Four twenty-three, this one's pretty simple, we subtracted everything but sixty-six ninety-five, leaving the twelve thousand dollars in there, because we're cutting everything else across the board, we're putting stuff that wasn't there last year. So, that's just my recommendation, and we can beat up on it now. I left sixty-six ninety-five, twelve thousand, in there.
How long, sorry?
Oh, 'cause that's what was given to us last.
Yes, you're right.
Yes, the sixty-six ninety-five should be twelve thousand dollars, that was a clerical error.
Yeah, got it, got it.
I'd like to put back in five thousand dollars for vehicle and truck maintenance, we're already, it's nine under sixty-one-ten, we're already operating on just used, donated.
Ah, this was, it's sixty-one-ten, five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm tinkering, bad, and then, I know that we do need a computer, at least one, so, I don't know what the goal price for a computer is right now.
But, I mean, it's not, no more than, if you wanna go cheaper, good, but, you know, you shouldn't exceed seven hundred dollars, you should not exceed that.
It's better.
And that's if you're just getting the tower, you know, and the monitor and everything, so.
You have software, bring up software.
And when you buy a computer.
Make it a thousand?
Make it a thousand. Is that mine?
Sixty-six sixty. Any other changes? I'd like to make a motion.
I would, I would like some uniform on here.
Just to say, can we, like, five hundred for, for polo's or t-shirts?
Thousand. Just to clarify, you were slashing everything of this?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't go line by line, I just put the twelve thousand in there and opened it up, it's a big.
Okay. Well, where is it, thousand? Thousand.
Alderman, I was, I was in.
Uh, fifty-seven hundred, thousand.
Okay.
And then what kind of training was that? For a state conference, I'll tell that time after that.
Alright, next one, we have consortium coming up that offers all the many aspects of training, there's six different stations of training they do throughout the day, I try to take the entire department today, because it covers everything from search and rescue to dealing with kids that have autism, to response and recovery for tornadoes and mass disasters of that, of weather nature, terrorism type events, we also are trying to get downstate for the state conference, which offers three days of training. In addition to that, I need to get training for traffic control, drought control, stuff that we need to maintain every year. Search and rescue is one of our.
Search and rescue is. It's an all volunteer group, and I would like to see them get trained so that they can do their job, I would.
What are you proposing, Alderman?
They'd be willing to bargain.
Yeah. Everybody's satisfied where it is.
We put less in police and fire training, so I think we can cut it down. Alright, Alderman, now, I'll agree, it's fine, that's why I left this one open.
I'm just gonna throw this, since we don't have a number one, what radios can you use? If you have any.
Uh, currently the radios that we have were provided through OASIS, grant, they are radios that are comparable to one of the fire department used to use before they upgraded, they are Cook County's radios, and we have six of those, that we use, aside from those, and those, the batteries on those are getting old, we've had those radios for quite a while, they've been there, I think they've been in service over seven years, and then in addition to that, the rest of the radios that we have in our department, our radios have been provided by our members through our own means of bringing them into the department, they're still a property of the individual members, but, yeah, everybody I have is volunteer, and they basically provide all our own stuff, kind of funded this department for the last five years.
Thank you. Any other additions? I'd like to make a motion then to make fifty-seven hundred, thousand, fifty-eight hundred, two thousand, sixty-one-ten, five thousand, sixty-six zero, sixty-six, sixty, one thousand. I didn't touch sixty-six ninety-five, because you said it was twelve thousand.
Correct.
And then leaving the other ones zero.
Keeping everything else zero, so that.
That's why I said, blank, clean the slate, so if anybody has something else in it.
Question from, great.
With memberships and dues, we are two years in arrears, and due for the current year for the suburban mutual aid response team, that is our mutual aid organization, when you see us come out for events, work the life parade, when you see us come out and work the Fourth of July parade, the fireworks, all the additional help that I get is through that mutual aid group, we don't maintain a relationship, we won't get that mutual aid.
And that's all, five hundred dollars?
Thank you.
I just wanted to hear more rationale, that's all.
For fifty-nine-thirty, tool expense, that's for chainsaws, flashlights, hand tools, that they currently don't have.
So, it's four thousand dollars.
Yes.
Can we compromise it too?
They'll get as much as they can with that, it'll go.
More than they've gotten in the past, I mean, go ahead.
Wouldn't the, would the fire department be responding to stuff with the chainsaws and, and not to dismiss what, what you're doing, but I, we just thought the fire department's gonna respond to something like that.
It depends on the situation.
But a man's scale to weather incidents, you're gonna need as many as you can, public works is gonna be tied up trying to move the large stuff, fire departments are gonna be, fire, fire departments are gonna be tied up trying to handle fire incidents and life safety with medical, police departments are gonna be tripping the joint, the criminal aspect, though, our aspect is coming to try and handle the rest of it.
In fact, we did have that micro burst, was it two years, two summers?
Yes, sir.
Mike, do you have any additional ones in there?
Well, yes, the tire repairs, our vehicles, these tires, they're, they're losing air.
Yeah, tires, batteries?
We, I sit down with Don and his team, and these are at minimum what he needs to get the department to operate as a, as an EMO department, and every hour that they are out there is an hour of overtime or, or regular time for a police officer or firefighter that would have to be there.
I, I am quite confident that you gave a lot of thought to this, and that there's a reason for every single.
This is not one I'm on, I'm fighting too much, I just wanted to get more rationale, that's all.
And, again, for, I believe for tools, tool expense, we also had flashing lights to, in barricades, so that we could have those available cones, traffic cones.
Alderman, I'm okay adding those if, if you're comfortable with that.
How about this, let's go back to the original one that was proposed, and I'll just bring up the changes, so look at the original one. So, already I changed sixty-six ninety-five to reflect the twelve thousand.
Yes, correct.
Go back to fifty-seven hundred, we talked about a thousand, I'm leaving fifty-eight hundred alone, that's two thousand dollars for training.
We gotta slow down here.
Alright, so fifty-seven hundred, a thousand, fifty-eight hundred, two thousand.
Give me a second, fifty-seven hundred is one K.
Fifty-eight hundred, leaving it alone, fifty-nine thirty, two thousand, sixty-fifteen.
Two.
Two thousand, right? Sixty-fifteen, leaving it alone, sixty-twenty-five, leaving it alone, sixty-one hundred, leaving it alone, sixty-one-ten, five thousand, sixty-one thirteen, leaving it alone, sixteen-eighteen, leaving it alone, sixty-one twenty, leaving it alone, sixty-one thirty-five, leaving it alone, sixty-six sixty, a thousand, sixty-six ninety-five, leaving it alone at twelve thousand, that's the correction. Seventy-four, seventy-forty, dues and membership, five hundred, and by all means, leaving the meals alone at a thousand dollars.
Sir, just so everybody knows, meals, just to understand, it sounds like you can call up beggars and order pizzas over there so we can have a party. Whenever I have mutual aid coming, part of what we offer those mutual aid companies who are volunteer in their time also to us, is we provide a meal for them when they come in, for giving them, giving a city blue island their time, meal and beverages, it also goes towards the fact that there's times when we get called up, we've been out on scenes for anywhere from twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, over twenty-four hours, that calls, if I have people out, I'd like to be able to feed them and give them something to drink, at the minimum, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion.
The motion is, in a second, by Alderman and Pittman, any questions, go call.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwood.
Hi.
Fairwood, hi, Osling.
No.
Osling, no, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, Pulos.
Hi.
Pulos, hi, Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Viera.
No.
Viera, no, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, eleven eyes and two no's.
This one, I don't have, well, I have some recommended changes, more of, I'm not familiar with civil service too much, never been on police or fire, so I've just got some questions. I'm not talking about sixty-six twenty, I'm talking sixty-six twenty-three, personnel and hiring exams, I think I asked before, we're gonna hire additional personnel, we spent seven thousand, what's the rationale to go to eighty thousand though?
Uh, because last year we didn't have to test for entry level police, entry level fire, fire lieutenant.
How much do those tests cost for eighty thousand dollars?
Uh, depends on a, a number of different factors. It's based off of the number of applicants and people who sit for the exams because we have a hundred people sit. Uh, that's a hundred tests that have to be created, a hundred interviews that have to happen. On average, they run anywhere between thirty to thirty-seven thousand per test. That also includes training materials for the fire promotional exam, um, and then legal notices. We have to post all this, first case statute and newspapers and.
Now, legal notice, I understand, I was township clerk for years, even that amount. Nowadays, it's like thirty-six dollars for a legal notice. So I was gonna just recommend five hundred bucks, you know, for that one. Seventy-sixty-one, five hundred. Legal fees, uh, ten thousand, we spent three thousand. Uh, it's not, to me, too far out of line, I was gonna suggest like seventy-five hundred, more than doubling it. And sixty-six twenty-three personnel and hiring exams. Chief in chief, this affects both of you, right?
Pardon me?
This is civil service, you're both preparing to advertise for jobs.
Yes, we are.
Do you expect us to spend, or have any history in the past of spending, um, eighty thousand dollars for these exams?
This is my first year.
No, no.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, or directing ourselves down too far for the cost of all of the exam, I mean, those tents might be down a little bit because it's in-house, um, but we also, we just talked about they pulled the police and fire set together, um, for the fight and we're extending the, uh, period of accepting applications, so the anticipation is that we're gonna have, uh, uh, buying this all around there.
Yeah, this one again, I'm not, I'm, I'm fine leaving it at the eighty thousand dollars because I'm so unfamiliar with it. In my seventeen years being elected, I've never looked at a civil service thing, so it's the most unfamiliar part of this whole budget. Um, so I'm fine with leaving that one, but I'd like to make the recommendation for legal fees of, um, seventy-five hundred and five hundred for legal notices.
Make this a motion.
I'll make it a motion, also, sir.
Is there a second? Thank you, any questions?
It's just a que, it's just a question for, just a clarification for the eighty, does that include the psychological part of the exam once they pass the written?
Yes, and again, that could be variable depending on how many people we go through.
Okay.
We may not hire anybody.
You got a motion, you got a second, any other questions, go call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Osling. Osling, no, Thompson. Thompson, no, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Viera. Viera, no, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Downey.
Aye.
Downey, aye, ten nays and two nays.
I'm gonna beat up Jim now, more than the police and fire combined. But it might not be. All right, for fifty-eight hundred on public works, training, we didn't spend anything last year, I'm recommending five hundred. Fifty-nine thirty, tool expense, we spent two eighty-five, recommending three hundred. All right, let me slow down, fifty-nine thirty. Can I go through and then we, like I did doing? All right, so fifty-nine thirty, that's three hundred. Sixty-fifteen, two hundred. Sixty-twenty, seventy-five. Sixty-twenty-five, five hundred. Sixty-thirty, twelve thousand. Sixty-fourty-five, I'm leaving, forty-two, five hundred. Forty-two thousand, five hundred. Sixty-one-hundred, twenty-five hundred. Sixty-one-oh-two, two hundred. Sixty-one-oh-three, seven fifty. Sixty-one-oh-four, seven thousand five hundred. Sixty-one-oh-five, zero. Sixty-one-ten, five thousand. Sixty-one-eleven, fifty-seven fifty. I'm leaving sixty-one thirteen alone. Sixty-one fifteen, five hundred. Sixty-one eighteen, five hundred. Sixty-one-twenty, thirty-three thousand. Sixty-one thirty, three thousand. Sixty-one thirty-five, six thousand. Sixty-five-twenty, oh, I left that alone, skip down to sixty-five forty-one, six hundred. Sixty-six twenty-five, two thousand. Skip down to sixty-six fifty-one, twenty thousand. Sixty-six fifty-two, five thousand. Sixty-six fifty-four, fifty thousand. Skip down to sixty-six sixty, two thousand. Sixty-six thirty-seven, zero. Seventy-ten, fifty. Seventy-fourty-five, six hundred and fifty dollars. Seventy-seventy-five, a hundred. Eighty-fourty, forty thousand. Turn the page, sixty-one-oh-five, zero. Eighty-thirty, zero. I understand those are, those are contingencies, right?
Yes.
All right, so that one out, we'll get back to, but the front page. Questions?
I think that for sixty-fourty-five for pound creek asphalt and stone, I think that we need to leave that, uh, leave it back at forty-five thousand.
That's fine, it's only a couple of grand difference.
And also for, uh, sixty-one-ten of vehicle truck maintenance and repair.
We spent forty-seven hundred last year.
Jim?
I'm sorry.
For sixty-one-ten, vehicle truck maintenance and repair.
Yeah.
Uh, you got ten thousand, uh, Alderman Bellato suggested what?
I thought it.
Five, cut it in half.
We spent forty-seven hundred.
Just as a, a note, when I rode with him shotgun in the snowstorm, I mean, those trucks were breaking down left and right.
Right.
That was just, uh, a one week period. So keep that in mind.
I, I even had one of the motor trucks down right now, it's gotta go off international on two seconds.
All right, sixty-one-ten? Still sixty-one-ten, leave it at ten thousand. Yeah?
Sixty-one-twenty gas and oil.
Again, just as a reminder that day that snowstorm hit, they were running twenty-four seven.
Yeah, could, could you, uh, agree with going back up to forty?
No.
Once we run out of gas, we run out of gas.
Let's come back to finance. Keep track of your budget. You got ten thousand left, go ask for more money in the budget. That's what I have to do, that's what people should be doing, is keeping track of their budget. In some spreadsheets of your accounting department, it should say sixty percent left, forty percent left. Do you have that?
Yes.
Appropriation, I'm sorry, do you have that system?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does the finance department get that? Does finance department get what, or not department, I'm sorry, committee meeting, I'm, during your finance committee meeting, do you get that document that Mr. Merzon was talking about where they stay with the spending, the actual and the?
Let's move on.
I got it, all this.
Go ahead.
All right. Director, Neil, I'll help you here on some items, a bit. All right, so, maintenance supplies, uh, you've got eighteen thousand dollars in appropriation.
Sixty-thirty.
I'm sorry, sixty-thirty, yes. Uh, you only spent twelve thousand last year, uh, specific reason why you're asking for eighteen thousand this year.
Uh, we cut it down to the twenty thousand with, uh, on proceeding.
Uh, maintenance, I get, I, I feel like the public works is running on both of them always, um, can we go off a little bit on here, Fred?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Yeah. Okay, thank Neil here, equip, uh, sixty-one hundred equipment maintenance repair, fifteen thousand, huge increase from what we spent, twenty-two, twenty-six.
That is for our front end motor that, yeah, the front end motor is on its last wheels and we need to send it out to get significant repairs.
And like roughly what's that alone?
We may have to.
We don't know, but they're gonna have to pull it apart and that, that actually goes with the rental unit or somewhere. Uh, we increased the rental because we're gonna have to maybe possibly rent one while that one's at shop. And we use that motor not just load the, um, material, but we also go along the street with it to pick up the, the, it's called garbage and all that. And also the, the.
I don't think twenty-five hundred is enough by long shot.
Yeah.
For the rental one?
No, this is for, uh, equipment maintenance and repair. You got fifteen thousand in there right now.
I make it, uh, ten?
Ten.
Believe it the same as last year?
I would not feel comfortable with that, knowing that we may have to rent that piece of equipment for a lengthy period of time. We were comfortable with the fifteen, and actually we're kinda tight on the fifteen.
All right, it's fine.
Leave it at fifteen?
Yeah.
Sixty-one-oh-three service contracts, another big increase from what we have spent and what we appropriated, six thousand dollars. We spent sixty, six hundred and thirty dollars on service contracts last year.
You're asking for six thousand.
But wasn't there something, uh, in a raw column on this one? Wasn't there a service contract in, uh, being charged in a raw column? That's why I was, was charged somewhere else.
Oh yeah, that's right, uh, we were previously charging a contract to, uh, a different account and this would accurately reflect where it should be.
Yeah, it might be Julie.
Sixty-one-oh-three?
Yes.
Okay, six thousand.
And then sixty-one-oh-four, equipment parts, you have a ten thousand dollar item in there, you spent seventy-two hundred dollars last year. Something causing you to want more this year.
Well, I mean, the equipment parts is like the motor and, uh, streets weaver, um, uh, just a roller has gone down on us quite a few times. We just picked it up in the winter, um, so, it's, we put, the roller's twenty-seven years old.
Yeah.
Um, the, the chipper, we just, uh, sent out the blade to get sharp and, uh, and chipper, uh, that's our, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that, can we go ten, leave it here?
That's fine.
Sixty-one-eleven, vehicles, trucks and parts, uh, we about doubled the budget here this time, I guess we were just talking about that. So we're ten thousand dollars versus we spent fifty-seven hundred dollars, uh, last year. Uh, it sounds like you're telling us you need ten thousand.
Yeah, yes.
That's fine, all right, thank you.
Sixty-one-thirty-five, buildings and street signs, so pretty good size, increased there from four thousand to twelve. We spent four thousand dollars, you're questioning or asking for appropriation, twelve thousand dollars. Something in particular you plan on doing there?
We have a lot of graffiti going on our signs, that we have to replace and stop signs, uh, do that on our signs, uh, we have, uh, a bunch of mini camp signs that have gone up. Uh, just out in front here, we're ordering two new, um, uh, fire truck. Like, it sits up on the thirty-six by thirty-six sign, it's got the motor truck right here on the flashing red lights, changing two of those, uh.
In addition, we have a number of non-conforming signs, there's new standards on reflectivity and, um, we are behind on replacing those.
And, and this one blew up and it was rusted out.
My lord, my.
Yes?
I'm very impressed with the fact that you have allocated in the past and spent so little at times, which shows great responsibility, I'm very impressed. So, I, I'm not gonna be picky here, if you ask for this money, even if you ask for it for appropriation, it shows in the past historically that you didn't have to spend it if you didn't need to.
I agree with all of you.
I think we're going crazy here, we're going to be picky, it's unnecessary. This particular department, I'm very impressed with.
So I, uh, Alderman, I haven't rejected any change.
I'm not saying, I'm not picking any, but I'm just making my general statement, that's all, feel about it, take it for what you want.
This, but this, so this is the department that almost everyone has contact with.
I agree, I'm, I'm on the same page, I don't think we need to change anything, it's a, it's a very responsible.
I would agree with that.
If we, if we leave the building and street signs at twelve thousand, we, we can do a street sign up in the quarter and make it one twenty thousand, please. Might be put up tonight. Yes.
And make a motion in a second, see what happens.
I make a motion to leave public works as is.
I want to make a second, Alderman Fernwald, any questions, go call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Pulos. Pulos, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no, Viera.
Out of principle, we cut every single other budget.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Downey.
No.
Downey, no.
It's not fair, you see?
Eleven, two.
I have, I do have a question regarding, uh, the public works. Our roads are atrocious.
Yes.
How much money do we have earmarked for road repair?
I know in our tips we have, Tom would be able to identify how much money we have allocated for any roads in the tip areas. Uh, and then in addition, we have our NFT funds, which.
So exactly how much money do we have for our road repair? They're in dire need of repair, they have been neglected for many, many years, as well as the yellows.
I agree.
Just from your perspective in this committee, I think that the answer is way, way not enough, I mean, there, because there isn't a light, I mean, it isn't there.
We have nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in NFT funds in addition to.
We got one point eight million dollars this year for, um, for various road projects, um, throughout the year.
So it's two point seven million gold at one point eight plus nine hundred.
Yep.
Two point seven, probably.
That doesn't count, also, we got CDVG grants to do, um, longer drive in the northeast, right, near the northeast, so, up that by a lot, um, six hundred thousand more.
And how much in non-tip?
Uh, that at the moment is the CDVG project, um, in the northeast neighborhood.
So you're talking three million dollars? So that would mean at least ten years before our road.
Nine grand money.
Okay, so in non-grant, non-tip money, um, there's currently, as far as I know, no budget for road repairs outside of CDVGs and tip districts.
Thank you.
All right, building department here. Count number four, fifty.
So building department, first change is fifty-seven hundred, uh, just uniforms, we didn't expend anything last year, so this, I had six hundred dollars. Next line I have is postage and shipping, sixty-twenty is two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, last year we appropriated two thousand dollars, uh.
Well, I was hell.
Sixty-twenty.
Sixty-twenty, and I did, uh, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars is the change.
Your first change was on your phone?
Was uniforms, was six hundred dollars. You're very welcome. Next, uh, sixty-one-oh-three is service contracts. Last year we did just under sixty-five hundred dollars, so I made it sixty-five hundred for this year. Uh, vehicle, truck maintenance and repair, sixty-one-ten, last year we did about a hundred and fifty dollars, so this year I, I made it for fifteen hundred dollars. The next line, vehicle, truck parts, well, last year was two fifty, uh, this year I doubled it to five hundred. Gas and oil, uh, was twenty-five hundred, so I kept that at twenty-five hundred. Professional consulting, five thousand three hundred sixty-four, this year five thousand five hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, the next line is computer, hardware and software, last year we only expended one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Uh, my change is two hundred dollars for this year. And then next, I just, I changed legal notices, we only spent a hundred and three dollars and I made it a thousand dollars for fiscal year eighteen. That's it, so happy to.
So what were those, the, the five hundred dollar one, what's your account number and then? The fourth, the fifth, I am?
Sixty-one-eleven?
Sixty-one-eleven.
Sixty-one-eleven. And then the twenty-five hundred dollars with what account number?
Sixty-one-twenty.
And then fifty-five hundred dollars on which one?
Sixty-six twenty-one, right underneath.
Okay. For the sixty-one-ten vehicle, truck maintenance and repair, our fleet of Ford Rangers is aging, I know they need brakes, suspension work, and these are used going out to job sites.
So what would you avoid, do you wanna keep it the same?
I, I was comfortable.
Four thousand?
Yes, and it's the same thing with the parts because berries, light bulbs, it's, they're aged, they're old.
Fine, making that, same parts, keeping it from last year's, um, or not last year's, but the one you, you said, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, I'd be comfortable with that. Then for the professional consulting, that varies. That depends on the building plans that come in and I don't wanna hold up a bit of building plan being reviewed because we don't have any monies appropriated.
So you're comfortable with fifteen K?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that change.
Got a question on this one, just to clarify, not against the amount, is this like the one, uh, like, uh, someone's build a building?
Got a question on this one. Just to clarify, not against the amount. Is this like the one, like, someone wants to build a building, Robinson has to review?
We have, we have to send it out to professional services. Our staff can't.
I figured. Thank you.
Can we change seventy-seventy-five? Make that five hundred?
I'm okay with that. That's meetings and seminars, Oliver.
Yeah, I don't necessarily guess it, but I just like to ask the director. I know, you know, you're gonna hire somebody new, so...
Actually, since working on this budget, I should have asked for more. We have a number of our inspectors that need to get additional certification to be doing the inspections that they're doing. But, you know, when I was preparing it, I wasn't aware of that.
Look at the under training?
Well, it also goes down to meetings and seminars where they can go and get additional training. This would be for South Suburbans buildings, code officials, where they have monthly lunch and learns. I would like to see our staff receive additional professional development.
Sixty-six sixty, computer, hardware, software, only spent sixty-three bucks. Asking for appropriation of a thousand.
Yeah, that's for the licensing that gets split among the different departments. There's different modules, and I don't think we were appropriating that correctly in twenty seventeen.
All right, can we leave that at a thousand dollars? Sixty-six sixty?
I would like that, yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can we recap, please?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So I had six hundred dollars for fifty-seven hundred.
Okay.
Fifty, fifty-six fifty, I had twenty-five hundred.
Fifty-six fifty?
That's what's there.
Yeah, we kept it the same.
Okay. Sixty-twenty.
Sixty-twenty.
Sixty-twenty, fifteen thousand.
No, fifty-twenty was twenty-two fifty, was three thousand dollars.
Sixty-twenty, you said twenty-two fifty, all right.
Correct.
And what were, what were we changing, man? One, two?
From three thousand to twenty-two fifty.
Oh, we're keeping it at three?
No, twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty, oh, yes. Twenty-two fifty, correct. The next one was sixty-one-ten, vehicle, truck, maintenance, and repair, and we are agreeing to keep that at four K.
And sixty-one oh three.
Sixty-one oh three, sixty-five, sixty-five hundred.
Correct.
Sixty-one-ten, you said fifty-eight.
And it went to four thousand. Sixty-one eleven, seven fifty. Let me read what I have. Sixty-eleven, seven fifty. The changes is what I'm referring to.
Right.
Sixty-one twenty, twenty-five hundred. Sixty-six twenty, back to fifteen K. Sixty-six sixty, one thousand. Seventy, sixty-one, one thousand. Seventy-seventy-five. That was where we left off.
We kept seventy-seventy-five.
A thousand, back to a thousand.
Sixty-six twenty went back to fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are the change professional.
That's right. Thank you.
You got the motion. We do have seconds. Oliver, any questions? Broke off.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Vida. Vida, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven ayes and two noes.
Count number four eighty. This one, you guys...
We have, we don't know. This is just totally a guess. Just leave it where it is.
Yes. I'm okay with that.
It's less than what was appropriated last year, and it's more than what we actually spent. We actually spent more than I thought.
Motion?
To make a motion.
Hawley. My ultimate. Vida, second. Hawley. Any questions? I'll broke off.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos. Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
No.
Belado, no. Vida.
Aye.
Vida, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Our director of finance administration is standing for quite a while.
Twelve one, I'm sorry.
So for...
Number four ninety?
Four ninety, I, because we eliminated the position for this, so I zeroed everything out, but, because I didn't really understand if we're not gonna have a person employed here, why we needed to have to pay for their office supplies or training, their computers, but if there's a need for that, I...
With the new management manager, it's gonna be both a dual building code and planning someone believes something for what their needs may be. I don't know exactly what their needs are going to be. This is our best guess without that person being installed.
So again, is there a motion? Motion by Oliver Fairwell to move it as is. Second by Oliver Kulos. Any questions? Broke off, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Vida.
Aye.
Vida, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Count number four ninety-five.
So marketing, kind of the same, same reasoning. There's not a full-time position there. So that's, I also had some questions too, because why, if there's not a full-time person, do we have IMRF and FICA and health insurance?
If I recall, that is for our videographers?
Yeah, there's... Part-time, but they're working more than, so we just get the IMRF.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm okay with, okay with this one.
As in motion by Oliver Fairwell, is there a second? Hawley, any questions? Go ahead.
Under sixty-six twenty, professional consulting?
Yes.
What exactly is that? I know you mentioned a five-year plan.
A five-year plan, and then if we have to outsource any of those marketing activities, once they've been identified.
Is that a bid process?
Depending on the project, yes. I mean, I don't know what's gonna be included in that plan. Only forty thousand, we're not gonna, that's not a lot of money to do a lot of marketing. After we get the plan. Go ahead.
Under seventy-eighty-one, community promotions. Does that money include payments for, like, hiring part-time police officers, or does that go under police department?
That goes under police department.
Remember, we're trying to make a wide destination location.
Motion, then second, but Farnwell and Hawley.
Any questions?
With no change.
Broke off.
Yes. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Vida. Vida, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Count number four ninety-seven, the rec center.
So on this one, the only change I have, I would like to just remove the additional salary for the non-existent position we have yet. So I, I think that it should be fifty-one, six forty-six is, is what, is that what Dave said? Without the, that portion. So whatever Mr. Jackson's getting should be the only thing I'd like to see on that.
I second that.
What was I said? Sixteen to fifty is not a portion.
Okay, so can we, so the only thing I want to change is just removing that from, from this line item.
I second.
Removing...
Reduce the fifty-one hundred line by sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
And that would, and then that would also change the FICA and the Medicare and the IMRF, but those are the only, the only changes I have on this line item, or this page.
There's a motion. There's a motion, Oliver, not a second by, who's the second over here? Any questions?
Were we gonna, you know, we need to do, need to get numbers from Dave for those FICA?
Okay, what are we, again, we have the two percent contingency in there. All we're doing is removing the sixteen to fifty, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
What is this, small, sixty-one thirty? A lot of hundred dollars there, and now they got ten more.
Yes, that's for a TV at the recreation, so we can program the space for our seniors, soccer nets, small equipment, basketballs. But I think you have the whole list of what we talked about. That's also for some cleaning supplies that we don't have over there. It's, it adds up. And even at ten thousand, that's not everything that I was asking for.
And these expenses were included where, before general administration?
They were, yes. For my, thank you.
Okay, here's your new salaries. I rounded up the nearest hundred. Fifty-two thousand, seven hundred. Hard-time stays, the fifty-two hun, the fifty-two hundred line item stays at fifteen thousand. Fifty-four hundred, employee FICA is now forty-two hundred. Fifty-four fifty, employer Medicare is now one thousand. Fifty-five hundred, employer IMRF is seventy-two hundred.
Dave?
Yes.
The people included the two percent raise in that.
Right.
It's gonna be fifty-one thousand, six forty-six.
I, I...
Yes.
Yes. Those are, those included, additional two percent. Yes, you're correct. I asked that, and you said, everyone said, yes, leave that in.
I'm against including the two percent. If we're made everybody else not get the two percent.
I thought we did the two percent.
I thought we did too.
We already did the two percent.
We approved the two percent?
We approved the two percent. That was, that was like the fourth thing we did. We just didn't do it for finance and the works office. We have to go back and write that.
Right. No, it's a... I don't think we did. I mean, we did...
Two hours ago. What is the full-time salary for the rec center? Fifty-two seven or fifty-one, six forty-six?
Fifty-two seven. I think Dave, you said fifty-two seven?
Yeah, he did.
Seven seven, mayor's vote still failed.
That's correct.
Failed.
Oh, two percent fail.
Yeah.
Keep it fair across the board. So, whatever was last year.
I'll take the raises out.
All right, let's keep going, people.
I have the motion.
Motion.
Good second.
Oliver, do you have any questions? Broke off.
Fifty-two seven?
He's getting that number right now. I hear it. No change. I did go fifty-one, six fifty, for full-time, fifty-one, six fifty. Part-time, fourteen thousand, five hundred.
The new FICA amount is forty-one hundred. The new Medicare, leave it at a thousand, and then IMRF, seventy-one hundred. Again, just kind of rounding up the nearest hundred at those. So we have room for the amount we're spending.
So these, these are the amounts, fifty-one, six fifty, fourteen, five hundred, forty-one hundred, seventy-one hundred. Everything else stands the same.
All right.
Okay. Hawley.
Uh, no.
Hawley, no. Farnwell.
No.
Farnwell, no. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson. Aye. Carr. Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery. Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Vida. Vida, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes and three noes.
Count number five twenty.
This is another one, since they operate like the public works. I'd be okay doing as George did earlier, keeping it the same. I do have a lot of yellow, but if, I had a lot of yellow for public works, but if, if that's the consensus of the...
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'm sorry, keep it the same.
It's ten twenty.
Questions, if not, broke off.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling. Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos. Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
No.
Belado, no. Vida.
Aye.
Vida, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten three.
Your honor, I just want to make a motion to approve a business district as is.
Second. Got a motion? Got a second? Any questions?
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Ossling. Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr. Carr, aye. Pittman. Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Belado.
Come on, Fred. You know you want it.
Let me make this one, huh?
No. Aye.
Belado, aye. Vida. Vida, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Count number five fifty.
So, so the first one on full-time salaries, I'd like to remove the other portion of that, the rec center golf director salary.
I second it. Sorry.
Sorry. No, no, I have other changes. No, I didn't make a motion. I was just reading what, what my change is, so.
I would throw second in my motion. I apologize.
So you're removing forty-eight, seven fifty out of the full-time. Is that correct?
Correct. The number should, I think the number should be eighty-five, eight-one-four now.
I'd like to reduce the pro shop merchandise back to last year's appropriation.
What, what line is that?
Sixty-three thirty?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sixty-three thirty. Having been in retail, I know that buying more stock doesn't necessarily make it more profitable.
So what would you like to move that to?
Seventeen five.
We ran out of stock last year. That's why we increased it. We ran out of balls to sell.
So, so Candace, I'm sorry, Oliver, you want to keep that at seventeen thousand, five hundred?
Yeah. I mean, we had it appropriated last year. If we ran out of stuff, why didn't we?
Okay. No, I'm sorry. I'm okay with that change.
What line is that?
That was sixty-three thirty.
Sixty-three thirty.
I'll go with increase in alcohol.
Those sixty-eight hundred, we say that includes junior golf. Those sixty-eight hundred, we say that includes junior golf.
Uh, eight hundred, actually, fifty-eight hundred, no, junior golf is fifty-nine-twenty-five.
Okay, well, you didn't hit that.
Yes.
My children go to that.
It is in there, fifty-nine-twenty-five.
So I'd like to, I'd like to lower sixty-five forty-one to six hundred dollars. I know they want to get the higher TV package for the Golf Channel and all that, but I, I think that's kind of frivolous.
I agree.
So I, I'd like to, I'd like to move that to six hundred.
I agree.
What's that?
The people requested, when they say a hundred, three hundred, they.
That was our thinking, but, I mean, we have to change it already, it was more, I know, being network and stuff like that.
Did they have a question specifically in second year, don't have access?
So what do you want to leave that at, six hundred? I would like to leave it at six hundred, yes, sir. And then my, my next change is sixty-five fifty-two is parking lot maintenance. I know that back parking lot needs some work, but I think we could maybe go another year without doing, maybe a couple of years out there, a ton of stuff. Uh, I know I could talk to Theodore about this, and he thinks maybe they could just stripe it without doing the full thing, so I'd like to change it to five thousand.
Alvin, go ahead, you have a question.
You, you're on line item six fifty-two, right?
Sixty, yeah, sixty-six fifty-two.
There's, the, the north lot is, the gravel system.
The lot, the lot behind it, sorry, not the north, the lot, the lot, uh.
Is it gravel right now?
No, no, it's not gravel, it's, you know.
Supposedly it's paved, but it seems kind of gravel.
Uh, five thousand. Sixty-six fifty-two parking lot maintenance?
Five, bet, five thousand.
Yeah.
Or fifteen. Fifteen thousand up a little bit, it does need more.
Fifteen, I, I'm okay with fifteen.
It does need more.
Is that fair, fifteen's fair?
And I don't golf.
And then, I had, so then I have eighty-thirty for the building grounds, I know they wanted thirty thousand, um, I'm, whatever. I want to lower that, but I'm thinking fifteen, but we could change it, I originally had zero, but, again, I'm willing to compromise and change it to something else.
Again, this might take this place, they began to change that one because of the offfalls. This is about, this is about the roof and the.
The hole in the bar?
This is a number of different things.
So I'm, I'm fine, I'm, I'm, I'd like to lower it, but maybe like fifteen thousand?
My concern with that is if we defer the maintenance, it's only gonna get worse, and we've deferred maintenance for a number of years, and.
What was that number?
That number is eighty-thirty, towards, uh, towards the bottom, second to last.
So I, I think it, it, so it doesn't make any limits, um, I know in the years, inside it was like, they would wait till the thing was like, fall apart, and I do, was it, it was, he would, would not spend a minute on it, you know, until it fell off, so, I know, I'm pretty sure we're, we're, probably high nine, you know, that number that, and this is the number you came up with, right? Right, you reviewed?
Yeah.
And it is more.
Sure, no, I get that, so if you want it, so it's a consent, keep it at thirty, then? I don't have anything else, rather.
Waiting on the figures for the salaries. All right.
Okay, fifty-one hundred, full-time, eighty-five-eight fourteen.
What's that?
Eighty-five. Eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fourteen. The salaries, I'm sorry, the fifty-four-hundred employer for FICA is now ten thousand three hundred. The Medicare is now twenty-four hundred. The IMRF is now thirteen thousand one hundred.
Make a motion with those changes, pass.
Motion, is there a second, Alvin, do you have any questions?
So the, the full-time salary is going to be lowered eighty-five-eight fourteen, is that correct?
That's correct, eighty-one-four, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, six-three-three-zero, we're reducing that to seventeen-five, is that correct?
Six-six.
And I wrote down?
Six-three.
And sixty-six fifty-two to fifteen thousand? And eighty-thirty to thirty, we're leaving at thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Eighty-thirty's staying at thirty.
Sixty-five forty-one?
What was the other change I took, sixty-five forty-one TV services?
TV services, yeah, six hundred.
Okay. It's already in there. Holly.
Uh, no.
Holly, no, Farrenwell.
No.
Farrenwell, no, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson. Thompson, no, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Pulos. Pulos, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye, Viera.
No.
Viera, no, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Nine and four.
Count number five-fifty?
MFT.
Let's talk about pension.
For the library, I said.
Yeah, the library, we got to cut that, and.
Can we just move to accept rest? I moved to accept the rest. Okay. We probably want to do a motion, since we've done it. Seven hundred. Eight hundred. Debt service. Library. No change.
Correct.
Who's going to motion? Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson. Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye, Frosto. Aye, Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, fifteen ayes.
Some motion to adjourn, and you didn't. Oh, that's right, that's right.
I thought we did that.
I don't think, I don't think, yeah. We voted down the penny, you're just right. So there's, there's no point there, you're doing the findings.